Of the council voting in favor. Legal committee reviewed this at their February meeting and recommended approval two to one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holloman. I have one individual that signed to, signed up to speak on this one. A, a Mr. Pari, Perry? I'm sorry, I got that name incorrectly.
I will take my five minutes now.
Three. State your name and your address.
Jason Perry, three thousand Chiquita. Uh, let me just say, uh, just for the beginning of it, when the, the, the current, uh, rules that you currently have came out, I wasn't a big fan of those either. Y'all all remember the complication from it all. But I can say this, that, uh, I favor those much more than what is being proposed now because of the fact that here in the United States of America, as a republic, not a democracy, but as a, a republic, uh, we still have rules in place that, um, that, that allow for things to, to be the will of the people. Uh, my concern is that under what is being proposed now, theoretically, someone could become the mayor pro tem with two votes, uh, literally just two votes could be become the mayor pro tem. And that's a concern for me because it's not just a figurehead. Uh, being mayor pro tem does put that person in a position of, as I would say, the president of the city council, uh, that in, uh, God forbid, uh, but the mayor passes away or becomes, uh, in, 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 in hospitalization or something that cannot perform the duties of the mayor, uh, or something to that matter. The mayor pro tem then takes the charge of the, the office of the mayor until the next election. Uh, so I, I, I want to heed this council, uh, that, uh, as a constituent, I want to make sure that the person that is leading our city council and could potentially become, uh, our next mayor, uh, to, to be something that is, that is, uh, voted on and that has a, a high approval rating from, uh, our city council. Even in the system that we have right now, if you're elected into congress, if you're elected into senate and those particular things, uh, there is a, a majority situation involved, uh, from those that are voting, a majority of the three or whatever it may be, uh, that's the way that it is. And, uh, so I would just highly encourage you, uh, though it is, uh, a, a difficult, the, the way that things are written, uh, to continue as you have currently on the books and move forward from there. Thank you, and this is the last time you'll hear from me tonight.
Forever? Excuse me. All right, I have Councilor Grant.
Yeah, I just want to start with a question, and I've talked to Joe about this, about putting who's bringing this stuff forward, even on the past resolutions that we've talked about tonight, about putting their name on here so we know who to contact and things like that on, on this. So, I guess, that's my first question, is who's, who's supporting this resolution? I know the previous two resolutions we had, those people said who was doing that. So who's, who brought this one forward, I guess?
Councilor Orpesa? If you may, yes, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and make sure your microphone's activated? Is it working? There it is.
Yeah, there it goes. I'm the one, I'm the one that brought this up, uh, mainly because it's not going to affect me because I, my tenure ends tonight, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, it just kind of, no, I still have the floor.
He had the floor. He had a question and you were answering it.
Oh, okay.
I'll put you on the list, though.
No, that, that's fine.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Councilor Grant.
And I don't mind going over this, like we've talked about on the, on the council rules of order. I don't really like that it's right before we're going to vote on that tonight. And I do think, I, I think the way it worked out last year was actually, you know, majority got it, went down, or well, went down to a coin flip in that one. Um, but it makes me deeply concerned, and even in reading this, it would kind of promote, kind of a rolling quorum, I'd think, too, a little bit, where you've really got to be counting votes on, on who's going to be doing what on the mayor pro tem. So, I'm not a big fan of this change where, in some case, someone could have two votes and be the mayor pro tem. Um, I, I think it does need to be the majority of the council because you are the vote and the representative of the council. So, I'm not, I'm not a fan of, of changing this. Thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Foster, and that exhausts my list. Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Uh, this did come to legal and it was approved two to one. I'm, I was the one against it. Not that I am opposed to talking about changes, but when I, when I asked and posed the question, since this is coming to council on, on the night that we're, um, going to elect a mayor pro tem, will it affect it? And I was told yes. Um, I don't think that any rule or any body should make changes prior to, uh, an election that quick. Um, so I would, would not be opposed to it if we had just talked about this in July. But bringing it right before a vote, um, I, I voted against it and tried to convince my other counselors in legal to also, just because I did not think it was appropriate for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have no one else on my list. Oh, I have Counselor Henderson and Counselor Robuck. Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too speak against, um, uh, this resolution. I think that, um, we need the majority vote in order to have a mayor pro tem that, um, that, uh, is highly qualified. So, I would prefer to keep the, uh, the proc, the procedure the way it is. Thank you.
All right, then I have Counselor Robuck, and that exhausts my list. Counselor Robuck, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, the position of mayor pro tem, as, as has been explained, is, is outside of some, some handling of some, some details here in our meetings, also is, is steps into that mayor's, the mayor's position if the mayor, uh, is for some reason incapacitated, out of town, et cetera. Um, the, the people of this, uh, city, um, elect the mayor, they choose the mayor, and I think that it's important that the, the people's will is represented as well. I'm not going to propose this tonight, I may do it in the future, but I really think, especially because the mayor asked me not to, but I, but I real, I really think that, um, much like the, the, the president picks his vice president, the mayor should pick the, the mayor pro tem. And that way, keeping the consistent policies of the person that the city, the constituency has elected and put in place in the case, uh, that the mayor is incapacitated. Uh, I yield.
All right, thank you. Other, anyone else wish to be comment on this matter? I'm sorry. If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, a roll call vote on this one. A yes or I approves resolution nineteen twenty-three dealing with amending the governing bulls, rules of order. A no or nay rejects resolution nineteen twenty-three. Again, a yes or I approves it, a no or nay rejects it. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Orpesa? Counselor Foster?
No.
Counselor Stubbs?
No.
Counselor Robuck?
No.
Counselor Grant?
No.
Counselor Henderson?
No.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Best?
No.
Motion fails. Wait, wait, wait.
That one shows up best as a yes.
Oh, no, she was a no. Did you hit the wrong one?
I did.
Okay, 'cause, can we correct that?
Yeah, we'll correct it on our end, but just for the record, we'll note that you accidentally voted yes and you made no.
I'm an accident waiting to happen.
Just don't brag.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, thank you. All right, next up is item number twenty, Counselor Best.
See, I was focusing on this. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of resolution nineteen twenty-four to transfer surplus truck to the Chavas County Sheriff's Office.
I, I have a motion by Counselor Best and a second by Counselor Foster to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty-four. Chief Graham?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I almost feel like I need to apologize for bringing another transfer item to you. Um, what we're asking for, uh, clearance for tonight is to transfer another surplus vehicle that we're not using that's, um, currently on our, uh, in our fleet. Um, transfer it from the city of Roswell to the Chavas County Sheriff's Office. Um, this is a vehicle that was donated to the fire department by the New Mexico Gas Company in two thousand and nine. We did get some use out of it, and it's no longer, um, of any use to us at this time. Um, having discussions with our sheriff, he expressed an interest in it. And certainly, we have a great working relationship with the CCSO. Uh, ten percent of our calls that we respond to are in, in, outside of the city limits and the county. And, um, a number of those calls, uh, we do rely on our sheriff's department to secure those scenes. We've got a great working relationship with them, and so, uh, I certainly support transferring this vehicle to them. I stand for any questions?
Counselors, any questions or comments on this one? All right, I don't see anybody wishing to jump in. I will then ask for a voice vote, a yes or I approves resolution nineteen dash twenty-four, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, hearing none passes nine to zero. Next up, item number twenty-one, Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty-five, adopting and approving a new fund of intergovernmental, intergovernmental grants previously reported in the general fund.
I have a motion by Counselor Grant and a second by Counselor Foster to approve resolution nineteen twenty-five. Ms. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, you guys look great up there. Um, I just wanted to say that I've been here five years. Came in with Mayor Kentai, and we've come a long way. We used to be in a little room up at City Hall, and now look at you, you look great.
Yeah.
So, I always get to come up and talk about money. That's, that's me. So, this, uh, resolution would adopt and approve a new fund for our intergovernmental grants that previously, previously were reported on our, in our general fund. Department of Finance is, uh, requiring municipalities to exclude intergovernmental grants that have been restricted uses as part of the general fund. That, what they initially want is for the grants to be recorded in separate funds. This is a housekeeping item to align with our DFA rules and regulations. Uh, the Finance Committee did hear it on March the seventh and voted in favor four to zero for the resolution. I stand for any questions?
All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to jump in on this one, counselors? All right, if they don't, we will go with a voice vote. A yes or I approves resolution nineteen dash, uh, twenty-five. I need to get my glasses out, I'm sorry. Uh, a yes or I approves resolution nineteen dash twenty-five, a no or nay rejects it. Once again, a yes approves, no rejects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none passes unanimously. Next up is item number twenty-two, Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval, resolution nineteen dash twenty-six, adopting and approving budget amendment to the DFA's beginning cash balances.
I have a motion by Counselor Grant and a second by Counselor Foster to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty-six. Ms. Garcia?
I'm back.
You're back.
So, we are asking for resolution nineteen twenty-six to be approved. Again, this is a budget amendment to amend DFA's beginning cash balances. So, I, oh, I guess I need to move this here. So, on your second bullet, on your presentation, we have the smart meter project, but we also should have added the twenty fifteen GRT bond and the twenty seventeen recreation bond projects, all three of those projects, whi, which have been, been recorded with the Department of Finance under the broad proceeds instead of combining with their corresponding fund. So, basically, what that means is we've combined them in the wrong place, we need to move them out. Again, this is a housekeeping item, there's no changes to the totals. The resolution would allow us to move the proceeds into the correct fund as a budget amendment. Again, the Finance Committee did, um, visit this on March the seventh meeting and voted four to zero in favor. This does not affect your fund balances just where the information is recorded with DFA. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Counselors, questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or I approves resolution nineteen dash twenty-six, a no or nay rejects it, a yes or I approves, a no or nay rejects. All those in favor of resolution nineteen dash twenty-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Seeing none, hearing none passes unanimously. Next up, item number twenty-three, Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion on the amended resolution that you have as a handout, resolution nineteen dash twenty-seven, which details a budget amendment for the purchase and installation of a transformer along with the rental of a generator for building ten eighty-three, Dean Baldwin, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents, which does include GRT.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Grant and a second by Counselor Foster to take action on resolution nineteen twenty-seven as presented to you. This has some, uh, grammatical and other, uh, changes. So, are we all familiar with which, uh, version we're talking about? Any questions on this? Counselor Orpesa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my question is, where is this money coming from?
Okay.
Would you like me to go ahead and present? So, this is a budget amendment for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six twenty-eight. Uh, one of the old pot transformers failed within our building ten eighty-three, sorry. I'm getting used to this. Um, which powered the commercial air compressors within our facility, the facility. Over there. This circuit is critical, is a critical circuit as part of the fire suppression. Is, is a dry pipe leg with needs compressed air to prevent water from entering the pipe. So, Kevin helped me write some of this, or he did write some of this. The use of the existing agreement with the Roswell Independent School District, which is RFP eighteen zero eight, electrical services on demand, is the procurement vehicle being used. The amendment will come from the airport reserves. Uh, right now, their balance is a little over a million, sixty-seven. Um, so that's where it will be coming from, counselor.
And why are we renting instead of buying?
I would, uh, ask Mr. Dillon to come up.
Where are you at? There he is. Come on down.
He can help me answer this question.
I couldn't answer that, I don't know. It's a good question. But we don't, that to buy one that size would be significantly more money than a hundred and thirty-two thousand, I can assure you that.
But, I, I, I realize that the amount of money that we would have to spend for a permanent one, but how much money are we going to spend on a rental basis for as long as we keep it?
This is the first time we've had...
Did you want to inter?
Just, just really quickly, and I think that, uh, because not all the counselors were involved in exactly what occurred out here, I think maybe a, uh, walking through the timeline as to what we did and why we accomplished what we did. Um, the, the transformers that were in the building failed.
Right, yeah, the transformers that were in the building are, you know, were in there when the hangar was built, back when the base was here. So, we had to do a lot of searching to try to find that transformer to replace it. We found a used one, uh, somewhere in the United States. Bruce Courtney from JNG located one and came in and installed it. However, w, in the interim, we had to have temporary power to assist the facility as the description explains in the slide. And then, uh, and so, we were, we're in the process of updating the transformers at the location, and we're waiting for Excel to still give us some updated information to let us know exactly when that's going to happen because we still don't know. So, once that happens, we'll update the transformers so we don't have to deal with, like, nineteen forty-seven technology within the electronic transform, transformers.
But, but at this point in time, we don't have an idea as to how long we're going to be paying rental.
It's already over.
Yes, yeah, we're at the conclusion of it. The, 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 the failure of the transformer happened three months ago. In order to keep the business operating, we rented a, we rented the transformer to allow the business to continue. At that point in time, we did not know how long it would take to get the new transformer in and get this all set back up. So, we went out, uh, as a, as a very quick purchase through our vendor, was to install a transformer so that the business would not miss any downtime due to a failure to have power in the building. And so, uh, it took three months in order to have that work done and have the new transformer, uh, process all installed so that they could, we could now take that out. The vendor is asking for payment now, and so we need to, uh, we need to, uh, finish, finish that responsibility within that three months. So, we rented a, we rented that, this unit for three months in order to get the new transformer and get the system back up to date. It was in order to keep the business in, operating until we could get the work done.
So, if the action has already been taken?
The action's already been taken.
Why is it coming before us today?
Uh, when, when the cost of anything that we purchase is over sixty thousand dollars, we want to bring it to the city council for an approval. And so, uh, and so, uh, when we started the process, this is a three-month, and the, the total price was a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And so, we're asking for you to ratify the decision of your city manager, saying, I understand, I under, and we're taking care of it so that we can take care of the vendor. That money was not there, we did the emergency purchase for that and, using the, uh, the procurement, uh, for the Roswell Independent School District, so we met all the procurement laws. Uh, and so now I'm bringing it back to you because we now need to pay the bill, and in order to transfer money into the budget to cover that, that'll take city council action.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, I have, uh, Counselor Grant. Are you done? Anyone, anything else? All right, any questions or comments? All right then, I'll ask for a voice vote, um, resolution nineteen twenty-seven. This is the version we're talking about, ladies and gentlemen, counselors. All those in favor of this will signify by saying aye, any opposed, say nay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I hear one no, Counselor Orpesa, eight yeses. Motion passes. Next up, item number twenty-four, Counselor Robuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to approve, uh, the Pecos League of Baseball Clubs Roswell Vares lease agreement.
I have a motion by Counselor Robuck and a second by Counselor Foster to approve the Pecos League Baseball Club's lease agreement. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, this is a lease agreement for the Pecos League Baseball Club. Uh, they host the Roswell Invaders team, uh, out at Joe Baumann Field at, oh, wait, Joe Baumann Stadium at Coca-Cola Field. Uh, this is a relation, longstanding relationship. This has been, uh, how we've handled it in the past, is just to do yearly leases. Uh, the new lease, the terms for the new lease is that they would be allowed to use, uh, Joe Baumann Stadium at Coca-Cola Field, uh, for specific days, that they have a timeline that they need to specify the days. Uh, it's a multi-year agreement, uh, which gives us the ability to continue with this without having to keep coming back to council to bring it up. And we do, obviously, we've got an out clause, uh, if necessary. Uh, it does include the use of the city's liquor license. Uh, that license has not yet been issued. Uh, we expect that it will be issued by, um, alcohol and gaming this month. Uh, and then the final major term of the lease is that it's a forty-five hundred dollar rent. In addition to, uh, the city also recovers a price per drink, um, that is sold at the site. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have two individuals that have signed up to speak on this, two very patient individuals. Mr. Andrew Dunn and Mr. George Swenson. If you'll both come on up, uh, I believe you've been here long enough to observe what the pattern of behavior is. You state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes. And, uh, here we go. I think you're good.
You want to go first, Ms.?
Uh, you're all by yourself up there.
All right. I'm Andrew Dunn, director of the Pecos League, founder of the Invaders. Um, just, just real simple, two thousand and nineteen will be the ninth season of the Invaders. We've been here since two thousand and eleven, um, over two hundred and fifty players have played here. The Pecos League was once, um, a New Mexico-only league, and now it's twelve cities from the coast of California to the plains of Kansas. The host families, the city and the community of Roswell have been supported from day one. Um, the only difference in, in the lease from this year to last year is the municipal beer license, and, um, that's happened in our league, uh, in Alamogordo since the inception. Fans, um, want mainstream beer at the games. Um, we've had issues, uh, with, with picnic licensing. Two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, we sold under picnic license.
Since then, we've had fourteen young men staying with us in our house during the seasons. We call these young men our summer sons. During the last season, not only, uh, were our Invader, Invaders playing baseball, usually between twenty, or thirty-two and thirty-six home games, and a total of about sixty-four games in that many days. So, as you can see, they're, they're pretty busy young men. They have been actively involved in the city of Roswell, supporting area schools, special Olympic activities, the UFO Festival, the, uh, fishing day at the zoo. Um, they've supported, uh, summer youth activities at the adult center, provided numerous, uh, youth baseball camps to improve our, our young baseball players' abilities. They shop in our stores, they eat in our restaurants, and their, and, uh, and so do their opponents, as well as their families stay in our motels. In, uh, the two months that they are here, they provide a great evening of wholesome entertainment and our model temporary citizens, citizens of Roswell. What we are asking is the opportunity to sell beer at Joe Baumann Stadium at Coca-Cola Field during our home games. I am personally not a beer, a big beer drinker. However, I'd like the opportunity to be able to purchase a cold beer at an Invader game. That is, all I'm asking is the option, if I choose, to buy a cold beer. During these last four years, not a game goes by that someone hasn't coming up, hasn't come up to me and asked me why they can't purchase a beer at, at the field while they're watching the game. On a personal note, I would like to thank the city of Roswell for all they have done to promote the Invaders. Everyone from the mayor's office, yes, sir?
I'm, the, the three minutes are up. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. All right, I've got Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, uh, personally was on the council when we signed the first lease, and my son had played high school ba, uh, baseball. And when I went to the first game, I realized that this was no longer high school baseball, this was professional baseball that we had here at Roswell. And it was so exciting to see, uh, professionals who could, uh, really play the, the game. And it was exciting that we, uh, could have, uh, three to four hour, sometimes five hour, uh, seemed like forever games, um, even though I was waiting for eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock to get done. But it is one of the best entertainment, um, for the money you can have, and I appreciate Mr. Dunn for bringing him, and staying with us because, uh, he's chosen on several occasions to make sure that the Invaders stayed here, and he, he's gotten rid of other teams he, he owned. And so, I appreciate his faith, and I wholeheartedly support us, um, using our ability to have a liquor license out for, for them to use, and, um, just encourage everybody else to go out and see a great game. And are we going to have a winning season this year again? Huh?
Let the record reflect, uh, Mr. Dunn gave an affirmative response. Anyone else, counsel? If not, we're going to go with a vote. A yes or I would approve the lease agreement, and it was in our packet and described by Mr. Holloman. A no or nay rejects the lease agreement. Once again, a yes or I approves the lease agreement, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have nays by Counselor Sanchez and Counselor Moore. Motion passes seven to two. Thank you. Next up is the election of the mayor pro tem. Um, let me, before we go right into it, let me just say a few words. And I, when, when we redid the committee assignments a number of years ago, at that time I articulated a novel and naive idea of the mayor pro tem not being a committee chair. It was naive on my part because the decisions are made by two different entities. This body chooses the mayor pro tem. As mayor, I'm responsible for appointing the committee chairs. Therefore, it's two different actions by two different entities. And I apologize because I know some felt that I failed to stand by my commitment. I realized I could not control the actions or decisions of this body. So I want this body to understand that I'm not planning to change any committee assignments or committee roles. That will be only after the next general election. So you as the governing body, excuse me, you as the council will choose the mayor pro tem. Please note, under the current rules, I don't even vote if there's a tie. In no way, shape, or form do I vote. So having said all that, I'm not, Mr. Holloman, I think we just take nominations and leave it open, although it says Mr. Orpesa and Mr. and Ms. Call. Hang on. Do you see any?
That would be my preference to just start with nominations.
Mr. Orpesa, did you want to say anything since you're the current mayor pro tem? Well, he, he's listed.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. First of all, I want to say thank you for, to the, the ones that were, supported me last year. It's been a, a, a good year as far as I'm concerned. Obviously, you weren't sick enough so for me to be able to step up and take over some of your roles, but nevertheless, you know, it, it was an interesting year and I certainly enjoyed serving as mayor pro tem. As, as I know whoever gets it now will enjoy it just as well. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to nominate councillor Sanchez or mayor pro tem.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Grant.
Yes, I'd like to nominate councillor Jeanine Corn Best. I think a big, a big role of the mayor pro tem is being available to fill in on a lot of those meetings throughout the day and a lot of the public relations part. I know that's where I've assisted you in the past on when I served in that role. So I think that's a big thing of being, being available at all those hours and, and having some flexibility. And I know Jeanine Corn Best has been around long enough to, to, to know what, what is needed in that role on the council. Thank you.
All right, councillor. I have councillor Henderson. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I nominate Judy Stubbs. Councillor Stubbs has been a longtime leader in our community and has a lot of experience in leadership roles. I think she presents herself well, representing the city of Roswell. So it's my pleasure to nominate councillor Judy Stubbs.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. I hear no one else wishing to be nominated or nominate anyone else, so I have three candidates. Let me just say, I am thrilled to death. I don't have to vote. Neither do you. Now, are you ready for a, the vote? What we'll do is we'll do a roll call vote, councillors, and when Ms. Call calls your name, please respond with the name of the, of the individual you want to see as mayor pro tem. So Ms. Call will call the roll and you respond with, councillor? Do you really want to? Well, okay. Well, then I will call on you. Just got to say, get my attention. I've never ignored you. All right. So when we, we want all the, all the candidates, we have an opportunity to speak. So we'll start with councillor Stubbs. Then we'll go to councillor Best and then councillor Sanchez. How about that, reverse order? Okay?
Fine, I'm always last with my.
No, you're first now.
So I appreciate being first for something. I don't know how to handle. But I appreciate the kind words councillor Henderson and I just want to say, I think all of you know that I take my position on this council very seriously and maybe too seriously, I'm sorry about that. But I have attended each of our committees, I have attended many of our commission meetings as well as special events and I try to make time any time I'm, I'm called upon. I appreciate being able to do that. I've always tried to maintain professionalism in the things that I do and an open-mindedness. I, as councillor Henderson said, has been elected to represent the city of Roswell at both the city, the state, and the national level and it's been my honor to do so. I'm, I have to say that I'm blessed to work with these other ten people. It's been said that we're a very diverse group and I love that about all of you. And I want to thank my constituents who elected me back to this position and the rest of you that I sit with. It would be my honor to serve as the mayor pro tem. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Best.
Okay, well, I've been in Roswell for fifty-six years and I don't plan on leaving till I'm about a hundred and twelve, so you guys are stuck with me. I'd like to help with the foundation of Roswell. I've been here since two thousand and twelve and also kind of know the ins and outs. I have not gone as far as Judy, but I think I haven't been here as long as Judy, so I'm still learning. I'm a baby learning. I am proactive. I'm retired now. I no longer have businesses that I have to go to every day, so I can attend more meetings and do more public relations. I am a voice of reason. Some may not say so, but I am. I work for all of Roswell and I do speak with common sense and a lifetime of raising children and having businesses in this town and understanding the private sector along with the, the government sector, which kind of slapped me in the face in two thousand and twelve because that was quite an experience. I'm ready to help the city fulfill itself and continue to grow because we have been rocking on. Thank you.
Councillor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think the biggest thing is, is the unity that we need here in Roswell. You know, you talk about diversity, but we should be able to work with each other, that our goal is what is best for Roswell. And I believe now that having more time to be able to spend here at city hall and get involved more with the issues and stuff that we have to deal with on a daily basis, I think I have that, that more time. But the other thing is, you know, the Bible says to be quick to listen and slow to speak and slow to anger. And I believe that, that fits me pretty good, to help, to listen, and be slow to speak. And just use God's wisdom in everything that, that I do. Thank you.
All right. I will repeat my earlier comment. I'm thankful I don't have to vote on this one. So unless there's any objection, I'm going to ask Ms. Call to call the roll. Once again, when your name is called, please respond with the name of the candidate you are supporting for mayor pro tem. Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Councillor Sanchez.
Sanchez.
Councillor Orpesa.
Councillor Sanchez.
Councillor Foster.
Councillor Best.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Roback.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Grant.
Councillor Best.
Councillor Henderson.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Moore. And councillor Best.
Me, of course, councillor Best.
Let me guess.
Give me just a moment.
All right.
I'm going to double check myself with our legal counsel because this election scares me more than the local election.
We're getting giddy. We've been here three hours. Okay.
The councillor who won the most votes would be councillor Stubbs.
Wait a minute, we have three.
Have, we have councillor Stubbs who has four votes.
No.
Aaron.
There's only nine of us.
Okay, hold on.
She did screw it up.
No, just wait. Councillor Moore, you voted for Sanchez. Okay, that's where, okay. So you're correct, we do have three-three-three, so we have a tie.
All right, thank you. All right, now, if I remember the procedures, Mr. Holloman, correct me if I have it wrong here, we have a tie. So we will revote again. If it remains a tie, then a game of chance will eliminate one person from the vote and we will vote with two. Do I have that correctly, Mr. Holloman?
That is correct.
All right. So council, we will do another round of voting. Excuse me, we'll do another round of voting. Same procedure. Ms. Call, let's try it again.
Councillor Sanchez.
Councillor Sanchez.
Councillor Orpesa.
Councillor Sanchez.
Councillor Foster.
Councillor Best.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Roback.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Grant.
Councillor Best.
Councillor Henderson.
Stubbs.
Councillor Moore. Councillor Best.
Best.
It's a three-three tie.
All right, now, the game of chance, Ms. Call, your decision. Okay.
My choice is a deck of cards. I have a sealed deck of cards. I would like to have a volunteer from the audience, not a city employee. Councillor Perry, no. And this young lady is raising her hand.
There's nobody left here who's not.
So if I could just ask her to come up front?
All right. Why don't we have, do you want the couns, candidates to come down there? All right, councillor Sanchez, Stubbs, and Best go down there next to Ms. Call. Yes, we will, we will reduce, the, there will be, the quote loser of this will be dropped from the ballot and we will then vote with two names. And there is no way we're going to end up with a tie.
Correct. So.
No, there's nine of us.
So let me just, let me just explain my rules here for drawing the cards. High card wins, ace is high card. If both of you say, for example, we have two councillors that get an ace and one's a black one, one's a red one, it won't matter, the suit will determine. My high suit is because I'm female or diamonds, so the next one would be spades. Are you writing this down, Aaron? Spades and then let's have hearts and then puppy dog feet last.
She's having too much fun. And do it, the, the young lady that your assistant is. All right. I hope the whole council understands we are not done yet. We still got another whole page after this and a closed session. So don't get too giddy. We're losing it here. No, it's, all right, so for the record, councillor Stubbs drew a king of diamonds. Councillor Sanchez, den of hearts. Councillor Best, six of diamonds. So councillor, councillor, we will vote again. Councillor Best is off the ballot, so it's between councillor Sanchez and councillor Stubbs. So we'll allow them to return to their seats, including Ms. Call, who is going to meander slowly across the room. All right. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Call. Once again, councillors, your options on this now are councillor Sanchez or councillor Stubbs. Sanchez or Stubbs. And Ms. Call, call the roll.
Councillor Sanchez.
Sanchez.
Councillor Orpesa.
Sanchez.
Councillor Foster.
Councillor Stubbs.
Councillor Stubbs.
Stubbs.
Councillor Roback.
Stubbs.
Councillor Grant.
Stubbs.
Councillor Henderson.
Stubbs.
Councillor Moore. Councillor Best.
Stubbs.
Councillor Stubbs has six votes, councillor Sanchez has three.
All right, so councillor Stubbs will be the mayor pro tem. I forgot to mention, you'll take over tomorrow morning. The result, the rest of this meeting, we will still have councillor Orpesa as the. Oh, I thought you meant I had to do something tomorrow morning. No. No, now what I'm saying is that councillor Orpesa continues in the role through the conclusion of this meeting. So having said that, next up is item number twenty-six, councillor Orpesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to move for approval of Mayor Kentai's recommendation for appointment to the South Park Cemetery Board as presented and the individual is Danny Fulkerson.
All right, I have a motion by councillor Orpesa and a second by.
Second.
Second by councillor Best for the nomination of Danny Fulkerson to the South Park Cemetery Board. Ms. Call, there you are.
Here I am.
All right, you want to talk about this?
You know, I think councillor Orpesa said it all. Danny Fulkerson was the applicant that we had that actually did submit his application on time. We did have one other individual and that application came in two weeks late, so.
Okay. And this is, what's the term on this one?
These are two-year terms.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments, councillors?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Orpesa.
Two-four-year terms. The other two-four-year terms. And the individual that was in the term that expired is no longer eligible to run again because he's already been in that position for eight years.
Are, are we sure it's two-four-year terms?
Yes, it's two-four-year terms.
When, when they would change it, because the last time that I understood it was two-year terms and they all turned out at the same time.
Well, if you recall, when our previous legal counsel was here, we changed, we found out that some of those terms were incorrect and it was just, just not on this committee. So we set up the new, we passed the new part of the ordinance that set up the boards and commissions to stag. to stagger the terms at different timeframes, and that's when this was corrected at the same time.
So we do have, we do have staggered terms at this point in time?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the nomination of Danny Folkerson, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes. The next one, there's three names. I'd like to suggest we get them out, but we will vote on them individually. So in other words, there will not be a mass vote for these three names. We will, if, if, if you don't mind, Counselor Oropesa, move them, and then we'll, we'll operate on them one at a time, okay? All right, go, go ahead, Counselor Oropesa.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move for approval of Mayor Kentai's recommendation of appointments to the ETZ Commission as presented, and we'll start with Mr. Matthew Bristol.
Go ahead and list all three of them, if you don't mind, Counselor.
Okay, then the three of them are Matthew Bristol, Larry Connelly, and Mona Kirk.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa. Do I have a second by Counselor Best to confirm the recommended appointments of Matthew Bristol, Larry Connelly, and Mona Kirk? Any questions or comments about Mr. Bristol? Mr. Bristol will act on these individually. Nothing on Mr. Bristol? Then I'm gonna ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves Mr. Matthew Bristol to the ETZ, a no or nay rejects it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Next one up is Larry "I'm-a-problem" Connelly. I'm sorry, I misread that. I might wanna reconsider this nomination, but that's too late. Any questions or comments about Mr. Connelly's nomination to the ETZ? I'm not calling on you, so just be quiet. And none? All right, once again, a voice vote, all those in favor of Mr. Larry Connelly for the ETZ, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes, wow. Uh, next one up is Mona Kirk. Any questions or comments about Ms. Kirk? All right, so are we okay? Because this didn't pop up on my screen.
No, you're okay, just continue like you are, you're good. You're okay.
Okay, I have you on the record saying that. All those in favor of Mona Kirk for the ETZ Board, Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. All right, next one up, Counselor Oropesa, item number twenty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Mayor Kentai's recommendation for appointments to the Roswell Museum and Art Center Board of Trustees as presented. And there's five individuals, starting with William "Bill" Siders, Donovan Folkerson, Kay Cargill Jenkins, Valley West, and Priscilla Ornelas.
All right, I had a sec- I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa, and a second by Counselor Best for the names as presented. We will act on these individually. First up is William Siders. Any comments or questions about Mr. Siders? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to speak to the council and let them know, I sit, I'm the liaison to this board, and, and I heard the qualifications of the two new, and I've worked with the other three, and I just wanna let you know that these are quality people, and it's great to have them on
Good.
Roswell Municipal Air, Art, Air, Art Center, thanks, it's late.
I understand. Counselor Grant raises the question, well, can we just do this as a group? And we have had some other situations where my nominations were brought out, and I, I know this takes a little extra. I just feel like we're better off. Counselor Grant, you wanna?
This is just another good item to put on the consent agenda that's able to be pulled off whenever we get around to that.
Yeah, there's, that's a point. We could, we could talk about that. But in the interim, let's go back to the list. Can we back it up, the slide? No, we can't, okay.
Of course I can.
There you go, thank you. First one is William Siders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Donovan Folkerson, not Danny Folkerson, Donovan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Kay Jenkins, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Valley West, any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Priscilla Ornelas, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we got unanimous approval of all of this, thank you very much. Next up is item number twenty-nine, Counselor Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the purchase of a new fire engine via Houston-Galluston Area Council Pricing Agreement.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Grant, and a second by Ms. Counselor Moore, thank you, to approve the purchase of a new fire engine. Chief Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we're asking for this evening is permission to purchase a new fire engine. The fire engine that we're replacing was identified previous to the city's fleet replacement and management plan, but with the implementation of that plan, it was placed on this year's replacement schedule. It's a nineteen eighty-nine Pierce that, that we do need to replace. We're asking for permission to use the Houston-Galluston Area Council Purchasing Agreement, which is awarded via competitive bid. We do have a history with using this avenue for, or this vehicle for purchasing large-priced vehicles. We're asking for permission to spend five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The majority of these funds are from the Fire Protection Grant, four hundred and twenty thousand of that is from the Fire Protection Grant. As I stated, we started, we identified this vehicle for replacement several years ago, and started saving our Fire Protection Grant funds. The additional hundred thousand dollars was a grant that we applied for this year, and we were successful in receiving. I stand for any questions.
Okay, counselors, any questions for Mr. Graham? I mean, Chief Graham, pardon me. Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or aye approves the purchase of the new fire engine by the Houston-Galluston Area Council Pricing Agreement. A no or nay rejects the purchase of the new fire engine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Uh, next up, item number thirty, Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This as well is at the recommendation of the Legal Committee of a vote of four to zero. I move to approve the scope of services for RFP nineteen dash zero zero four, Air Service Development Consulting. And, uh, let's see, I'm sorry. To seek a qualified air service consultant to provide support for the RIAC, and changing the wording in the RFP from marketing and promotions to the word development on pages one of twenty-nine, twenty-three of twenty-nine, twenty-four of twenty-nine, and twenty-seven of twenty-nine, and then on page fifteen of twenty-nine, change the word statement of work to scope of services.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs, and a second by Counselor Henderson to approve a scope of service RFP for Air Service Development Consulting with the noted changes. Before we go any further, Ms. Call, do you have those, and do you know which ones she speaks of?
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Stark.
Mr. Mayor, counselors, good evening. What you have before you is an RFP to search out a air service development consulting service. Uh, the need for that is basically, as we've grown our air service at the Air Center, we have added the Phoenix Flight, of course Dallas was first, they're both doing well. And so the next question is, what do we do now? Where do we go next? So, little background information, the FAA projects that air traffic, I'm sorry, the passenger traffic will grow at two point three percent over the next twenty years, so a total of forty-six percent in passenger growth nationwide, so we'll have a part of that. Currently, the most recent history that the Air Center has had is a thirty-nine percent growth since we've added the, the Phoenix Flight. And that's been a synergistic growth between just adding the Phoenix Flight and what the Phoenix Flight did for Dallas. We have also growth in the Dallas Flight that was caused by that addition of the Phoenix Flight. So even with that, we have still a very small portion of the, of the market in this state. Ninety-three percent of the air travelers leave this state and come into this state through Albuquerque. Our percentage is about two percent. So we believe we have a lot of room for growth, but where would we put that growth? Where would we want it to go? We have some hints, some indications through some raw data, that Denver might be a good choice. Over the last three years, we've had survey data that looked, that Denver comes up as the number one choice of what folks answering those questions would like to see. Houston, Las Vegas, Orlando are also choices that come up in other sources of data. So our question again is, where do we go from here? We need to study this further and, and decide if any of those are feasible, maybe none of them are. I, I think a lot of us believe that at least one of them is, and that's where we wanna look at. So this RFP would ask for air service analysis and presentation preparation support in the form of marketing, definition and analysis, route analysis, air service presentation preparation, and presentation support. And that would be one element of the, of the RFP. The second element would be on-call services encompassing development of incentive programs, the SCASDAP analysis, and the presentation of the, of the grant itself, the proposal. Ongoing data and analysis, such as what we do now for the Phoenix Flight and the Dallas Flight, and then help with community relations. This contract would cost approximately sixty to seventy thousand dollars for the first year. That would include potentially the, the fee for the SCASDAP assistance, so that would be a little more the first year, and would most likely be less a second year, if a second year were awarded. So it is renewable for a second year based on performance. Timeline would be March twenty-fourth, issue of the RFP, April twenty-third, opening of the proposals, with an evaluation beginning immediately after that, and then legal counsel on May thirtieth, and the June thirteenth, City Council. You guys would see it again for that final approval, hopefully with a July one implementation of the, of the contract. And I stand for your questions.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments, counselors? All right, I'll ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the scope of service RFP nineteen dash zero zero four, Air Service Development Consultant, consulting, excuse me, a no or nay rejects the RFP. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Counselor Robach, oh, there you are. All right, thank you, we have a nine, zero vote. Thank you. Next up is item number thirty-one, Counselor Best.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of tower space trade on Mesa Tower by the state in exchange for future space on a state tower located in eastern portion of the county, country to be determined at a later date.
I have a motion by Counselor Best, and a second by Counselor Foster to approve a tower space trade on the Mesa Tower by the state in exchange for future space on a state tower to be identified later. Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that space has actually been determined since these documents have been put together, but council's asked to consider a telecommunications cooperation agreement with the state and New Mexico Information Technology Department. Currently, the city owns and operates a tower located on two eighty-five north at the Mesa Rest Stop. New Mexico DO-IT wishes to place two antennas and one microwave dish on our tower that we own in exchange for us placing two antennas on their Cedar Point Tower that's located east of Hagerman on the Cap Rock. Each of these locations will benefit, the, the north location will benefit the state emergency services in that area. One east of Hagerman would benefit our county departments, our city fire department when they respond out there. So we have benefits from both areas of our emergency responders. This is a five-year contract with the automatic five-year renewal. Public Safety did hear this, or consider this, and recommended three to zero to send to full council.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Matthews? Questions or comments on this matter? Counselors, I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the trade of space on the Mesa Tower with a state, space on a state tower, as presented by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up is item number thirty-two, Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I move for approval to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance nineteen oh three to annex area into the city of Roswell southwest of the intersection of East Mescalero and the railroad, ROW, with the legal description subdivision Berindo, Berindo Irrigation Farms Block Twenty-two, Lot Eleven, East thirty-nine point six feet, and Lot Nineteen, East thirty-nine point six feet, quarter southwest, south, twenty-two T ten S R, twenty-four E book, sixteen page nine oh seven, side area, one point seven seven four acres, and the owner is the city of Roswell.
I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa, and a second by Counselor Henderson to approve the authori- to approve to advertise for a public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance nineteen oh three. Now, counsel, we are simply acting on the authorization to advertise for a public hearing. We are not taking final action on the ordinance. Mr. Morris, go ahead.
Thank you. Staff is aware that we have some potential annexations that are looking to actually happen in the future. But it's been over like twelve years since we actually did an annexation within the city. And so we wanted to kind of pick an easy one to start, to practice, to make sure we've got our ordinance in place. And so the one that we picked, some, some city-owned property that's located on the south side of East Mescalero Road up against the BNSF rail right-of-way. The actual property, there's the municipal boundary, is the, the green line. The actual property is a fee simple piece of property that's used for drainage. It is up against the BNSF railroad right-of-way, which allow, is not considered a barrier. And so after looking at this, we found that it's consistent with state statutes, specifically with the petition method. It's our property, we're asking to come into the city. The area is contiguous with the city's municipal boundary. It doesn't create any enclaves of unincorporated properties, and Planning and Zoning voted five, zero to recommend annexation of this location. There were no objections to the recommend, to this annexation at planning and zoning. As I said, this is to kind of get us geared up for future annexations that may be occurring in the future. And staff is ready to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments on this one? So, just so we understand, basically, the city limits would now be on the, shall we say, the west side of the railroad track up to Mescalero, and then it would come over, across the road track there at Mescalero, is that?
Correct, correct.
And so there's this little portion that dives down of unincorporated into, down to Country Club, which is really a, I'm sorry, weird arrangement. to Country Club, which is really a, I'm sorry, weird arrangement.
Don't think I have a bigger picture. There it is.
Yeah, this thing, it comes all the way down. And it's, so this whole thing gets made more rational.
It basically, it cuts off that piece right there, and straightens out the municipal boundary.
Okay. Any questions or comments? This is simply the authorization to advertise, so I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or aye approves the authorization or authorizes the advertisement for a future public hearing and vote on proposed ordinance 1903. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Morris, thank you for that one. Next up is item number 33, Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of proposed final plat, PZ case 19-007, to subdivide two lots, zone R3 residential and Harshis subdivision into 18 residential lots to be known as Harshis redivision, and to include the legal description as noted on the abstract.
Thank you. I have a second by Counselor, I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa and a second by Counselor Henderson to approve a proposed final plat, P and Z case 19-007. Mr. Morris.
Thank you. One of the issues that was raised in the affordable housing study and brought, continued into the affordable housing ordinance was the lack of certain kinds of affordable housing throughout. One of those entities that does provide affordable housing units out there is Habitat for Humanity. One of the issues that they come up, up across every so on, is not having enough property to build on. And so what we're proposing to do is take a couple of parcels of city-owned properties that are located on the north side of Mendoza Park, bounded by Reed Street on the south, Melendez Park, sorry, Summit on the north, and then Kahoon Street on the east side, totaling 4.27 acres. As you can see, the blue lines in there, those are the original configurations. They were like 300 feet long by 50-foot lots, not quite sure what they were going to do with those. But we're proposing to resubdivide these into 18 parcels that could be used for the development of affordable housing, single-family homes. This is the proposed plot that would go with that. You see that basically they're two cul-de-sac communities. And one of the things that we are going to do with this is solve several problems. There's a lot of weird stuff that's on this area. First, we'd add 15 more feet to Kahoon Street. If you've ever been on there, it's a very small street. And so we, through this plat, we can actually expand it to 45 feet. Also, we wanted to adjust the plat to, well, make it aligned with the road alignment. Right now, the plat sticks out actually into the street. We wanted to delete 10 feet from the south alley to reduce it down to 20 feet, which is our standard alley size, and then add 10 more to the north. And so make it, basically make everything consistent with state, or our city standards with respect to the subdivisions. So what we're looking to do is create these parcels, and in the future, as Habitat or any other affordable housing builder would need, they would request these parcels to be released. We're allowed to do that per our affordable housing ordinance, which has been approved by the state of New Mexico. And so that would be the idea, is to build new products in one area instead of dispersing these out throughout the area. Planning, zoning recommended approval at 5-0, and there were no objections from the public. Stand for any questions.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have one individual who signed up to speak on this matter. Mr. Mike Penfield, are you still here? All right. God bless you. You gutted it out. I was impressed with the baseball folks. All right, go ahead. And so you saw the drill. State your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
My name is Mike Penfield. I'm at 407 West Charleston. I am the president of Habitat for Humanity here in Roswell. Want to thank you all for considering this. We are in need of more affordable housing for some of our lower-income families we do have here. And in doing this, this would definitely help us achieve that goal. As you can tell, as president, it didn't come with a speaking voice, so please bear with me here a little bit. We appreciate the support that Roswell has shown us and our partner families, and we thank you for consideration.
All right. Thank you. Counselors, questions or comments on this proposed final plat? Miss Call, do we need a voice vote, I mean a roll call vote? Voices are good enough on this one, because my chitchat didn't make it over here. So I've been flying blind. All right, councilors, this is approving a proposed final plat, a P and Z case 19-007, as presented. A yes or aye approves the final plat. A no or nay rejects it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up is item number 34, Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the, on the infrastructure committee recommendation of three to zero, I moved to proceed with hail damage repairs as shown in the insurance claim report utilizing either CES contractors and/or RFP 18-010 annual roofing repairs.
All right. I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa and a second by Counselor Henderson to proceed with hail damage repairs as shown in the insurance claim report. Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, we're seeking approval to proceed with the repairs as listed utilizing any, utilizing either a CES contractor and/or RFP 18-010 annual roofing repairs. Within the repairs, you got a, an abbreviated listing within your packet. Ninety-nine of 297 properties that are currently covered with the insurance received some sort of damage during hailstorms 2017. The payout result was finally resolved October of 2018 with the receipt of the third check. The insurance repair deadline to have these repairs done right now is December 2020. We have several other, other extensions available to us if we run out of time.
Okay.
So for a brief explanation of the sheet that you received, the red arrow in that column depicts the total estimated repair cost by the appraiser. The yellow arrow determines the depreciation, which is the amount that we would receive upon the completion of that repair. And then the green check represents the payment that we've received for those repairs. And I stand for any questions.
All right, councilors, any questions or comments for Mr. Dillon?
I have one quick one. If any of these structures received additional damage in this latest weather thing, how does that work?
Although, I mean Counselor Grant can probably explain a little further, but typically if the repair's not done, then they just either piggyback, if there's additional work on top of that that's needed, then they'll just add on to that.
Okay.
And then we still have to do the initial repair.
Okay. You do it right? Okay. All right, other questions, councilors? Questions, comments? All right, yeah. Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or aye approves proceeding with hail damage repairs as shown in the insurance claim report utilizing CES contractors or the RFP 18-010 annual roofing repairs. A no or nay rejects proceeding with that action. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up, item number 35, Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, at the recommendation of the legal committee at a vote of three to zero, I move to approve the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce Business, Retention and Development Services Agreement for a period of three years with four one-year options to renew, and also deleting number three of the agreement and renumbering accordingly.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Henderson to approve the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce Business, Retention and Development Services Agreement. Mr. Holloman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Staff has worked with councilors and some of these partner organizations in order to redo a lot of these agreements that we have entered into previously. We believe that it addresses some of the concerns or some of the gaps that we had in being able to manage those relationships effectively. So there is, you see in front of you with this item and the next item, the fruits of that labor of trying to work with some of these partner organizations to say, this is the information that we need, and to make sure that we can also be a better partner to you. I will just say, as an aside, especially dealing with the Hispano Chamber has been very invigorating. As you can tell, they have a new board, they have a lot of enthusiasm for what they're going to do. They actually came to us and said, we are planning, in addition to the events that we have listed in the previous agreement, we'd like to do two more new things. So, we're grateful that they are there, and we believe that this agreement will help us to make sure that we're engaging, keeping a healthy relationship with what we're doing. The terms of this agreement, as they're stated right now, it's 23, $23,100. In addition to not being the clerk, I should also not be the finance officer. It is, it's a multi-year term, so there's the options for extensions, obviously. The amount that is funded would always have to come through council for approval through the budget. Finally, it does include additional reporting requirements, and this is something that we felt was necessary to make sure that we were engaging, constantly engaging in a dialogue. It, what we have in the document is that they would be providing us information that they, as an organization, will already have. And many times, it's just been a case of, we haven't been asking for these kinds of information before. Meeting minutes, profit and loss statement, that kind of thing. And I would stand for any questions.
All right, before we go, Counselor Stubbs, what was the change you mentioned? Again, you talked about deleting something and...
No, if you'll notice, Mr. Mayor, on page 368 of the total agenda, which is the first page of the Hispano Chambers Agreement, there's a blank number three.
Oh yeah, I see.
And so I, I said just deleting that number three and renumbering the following.
All right.
Thank you.
I just brought that up. Now I got, any other questions, councilors, on this one? All right, Counselor, I have Counselor Grant.
Is the signature events that we've done, I think, over the last two years in here as well?
So that is item, or exhibit C. So just to give you a little background on the structure of the document, exhibit A is the scope of work, so these are the things that we believe that they can provide the city. B are the items, the reporting requests that we're making, asking for. And then C is the special events provision, where we are providing in-kind services and for these specific events to assist with putting those on. One, one of the things that we thought was beneficial about doing it that way is that it allows us to make any changes that might be necessary on the annual dates without having to make dramatic changes to the entire agreement.
What's this third event that's listed on there?
Oh, the DeLaws.
So that was, that was one of the, that's one of the new events that they had asked for. So what...
Yeah, but it's not been an event in the past, right?
That is correct. So this...
What are they doing?
They have, they are planning an event for the first weekend of November. And I think it's a, that was what they were talking about with the Day of the Dead celebration in their presentation. The idea is, and, and the total amount in there is that it would be $10,000 funded for the events, but that's for the total amount across all three events. So if they were able to have, or had the services across the first two events, and then there was money from that $10,000 that had been allocated over for the in-kind services, they could then use it to kind of kickstart that new event.
And that's a little bit where I'm going with my question, is I think just on the, even, they partnered up with the regular chamber on the Cinco de Mayo event weekend with the balloon thing. And I believe last year, each of them almost got, I think around 10 grand each for that one event. Was that right?
They received, I think it's $6,500 across both organizations.
Okay. Okay, that was, maybe that was my confusion then too, because I thought we had spent more on that event.
Right.
Okay, I yield for you now.
Okay. Any other questions? I have Counselor Stubbs and then Counselor Robach. Counselor Stubbs.
I've forgotten what I was going to say, but I don't want to admit it. I think that, that something that's noteworthy in this is originally, these agreements with both of the chambers were called for economic development. So, the group of us really thought that, obviously, we now have an EDC that's doing that, so we changed the agreement services from economic development to business retention and development. And Counselor Grant, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think, again, you'll see in this and the next agreement that those signature events were only for one year, so we have incorporated in these exhibit Cs, the, the language that allows them to still have some in-kind services from the city without coming to us each year. Thank you.
All right, I have Counselor Robach. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm glad that the Hispano Chamber is, is getting reactivated, and I appreciate you guys coming out tonight. And, and I'm really excited to see that organization reinvigorated. Thanks so much to all of you guys. I am, I'm, I'm okay with this now, but I do want to go on the record of saying, I think in the future, as we get a better handle on our special events and our events and all those things, I would really like, at some point in the future, to see those, that part of the agreement as a separate agreement. I do think that it just, it's just so much outside of the scope of either business retention or economic development and these, these type of events. I don't think they're that closely related. And in my mind, the, the business retention, and even, I don't have a problem with this, doubling down with these guys doing economic development, even though EDC's doing it. I think we can use as much as possible. But while, I think it's a convenient place for them to put those events now into this contract in the future, I think it might be great to split it out, because I think, I think with events, we need to be dealing with those on a case-by-case basis, and this makes it more difficult for that. I'd be, I would be fine with doing a separate agreement. But again, for, for this year and now, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments, councilors? Counselor Foster.
We worked several, several meetings on this, and, but I just wanted to make a comment towards Counselor Robach's about the economic development. One of the problems with having more than one organization doing economic development is it's kind of like having two insurances. They're going to fight over who has to pay the bill, and, and nothing's going to get paid. And having too many can really get confusing when you're dealing with bringing in a business, and they don't know who to contact. And they'll use that as an excuse not to come in, because they really didn't know who to contact. So I think we really need to focus economic development with our Economic Development Committee, and, and I appreciate our chambers doing business development, because we really need, our businesses, our, need some help, and, and having a place for them to go to is, is nice. So thanks. I yield.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to get in on this? There's some folks here from the Hispano Chamber. I, I should have snapped on this. They, we had them as a topic of the presentation, and we're way into this agenda. And this is my fault. I should have moved this way up earlier, so you guys wouldn't have had to sit through the whole sausage making. And I apologize. I was a little distracted by a couple of items. Help me remember this call, so we can do better next time. Anyway, on this thing, any other questions or comments on this matter? If not, I'll ask for a voice vote. A yes or aye approves the Roswell Hispano Chamber of Commerce Business, Retention and Development Services Agreement. A no or nay rejects the agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up is item number 36, Counselor... Next up is item number thirty-six, Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, is at the recommendation of the Legal Committee at a vote of three to zero. I move to approve the Business Retention and Development Services Agreement with the Roswell Chamber of Commerce for a three-year term with four possible one-year extensions to include up to three thousand, three hundred dollars in-kind for services for their rise over Roswell event.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs, and a second by, I thought so, Counselor Henderson, to approve a Roswell Chamber of Commerce Services Agreement. Mr. Holloman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just as we have done revisions to the Hispano Chambers Agreement, this is the revisions that we have for the Roswell Chamber of Commerce's Agreement. It has similar provisions to the other one, funded at the same level that they were at last year, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. It's a multi-year agreement. Again, this council has the ability every year at budget time to make adjustments to those amounts that are funded, and it similarly has reporting requirements. Again, we're hoping that these are documents that these organizations already have, and just to make sure that we're continuing the conversation, have a good, healthy relationship. And I would stand for any questions.
All right, I have, I have Counselor Best.
I'm, I'm having a real problem here. The Hispano has sat here throughout, through the whole thing. They've reorganized, they're ready to rock and roll. I have no problem on saying okay to them. We've been sitting here, they, the Chamber of Commerce has had a chance to come in and crawl in at the last minute. Is there anybody here with the Roswell Chamber of Commerce? Okay. I don't see anybody. I, I move to table this until they make a management decision that they really want to sign a contract, that we're gonna spend money on them, and they come in and act like they're a business.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Best to table this matter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a second by Counselor Foster. Counselor Holloman, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, Mr. Holloman. This is a debatable motion. Tabling motions are debatable.
Right, yes.
I was mistaken years ago, but I've learned. Thank you. So we're on a motion to table. I have Counselor Grant on the motion to table. Counselor Grant, you have the floor.
And I don't disagree with Counselor Best. I guess I'd just like to know who was involved in that, because, I mean, those meetings that you guys had, I know, a couple of years ago, I went through all this, it went through Finance Committee, so I've been kind of out of the loop. It went through legal, I'm assuming?
May, may I address that, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Counselor.
Yes, Counselor Grant, it did come through legal, and to be honest with everyone, I believe it was last May or maybe June, if someone needs to correct me, but maybe June, that this came to legal, and actually, it was at my suggestion that the, the agreement looked kind of old, it needed a lot of updating, and it needed language in it. So, we explained to the chamber representatives that were there, it was the president of their board, and one of their, the office people were there, and we explained to them that we could go on a month-to-month until we did get this issue resolved. Since then, Counselor Foster, myself, and Ms. Jennings, and Mr. Neb, and Mr. Holloman basically have met. We've invited the chamber members several times. They did meet with us once or twice, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but, once, twice? Twice, thank you. But, they've been on a month-to-month since July first of two thousand and eighteen. So this agreement, if you'll notice, is dated back to July first, two thousand and eighteen. So it's almost spent its first, well, it's a good half year of, of that agreement. We invited them to the last meeting we had, and they did not show, and they said they had some changes they'd like to see, but we've not, to my knowledge, heard yet a word from them, and that's been at least ten days or so, right?
Oh, wait a minute. Mr. Neb, did you want to chime in on this?
I just, I'm just as curious, so they came to the first two, I mean, how many meetings have you had that they don't come to, they didn't come to the legal meeting then?
No.
Okay.
No, and we have not received any, any of the changes that they were wanting to make, so we're not aware of what they were looking for. And I'll, I'll take the moment as well, too, to add in, as we've been running without an agreement for this long, we, we did put everybody on a quarterly basis, and it is after the, after the use of the three months, and then we re, essentially, we pay them at that point in time, which matches up to the statute. The concern we have for the Roswell Chamber and with the table is, it could potentially interfere with their next payment, because we've carried this on for a month-to-month, and, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that, for that purpose there, is that we, we will not be able to pay another quarterly payment without having this contract updated and, and completed, so.
When, when is that quarterly payment coming up?
We've done our last payment, which one? April first is the start of the last quarter.
So we can get through one more quarter?
They, they've received their, they've received the third quarter this year, they, they've received first and second. We would end up taking care of the third quarter, I would think, and then, there is no, there is not another payment, because we no longer have an contract.
So technically, we have three more months of, to drag this out if need be then?
No.
Well, if they're just now receiving the third quarter payment?
We will, we will, we will make the third quarter payment, which runs January, February, and March.
Right.
And then...
And you make it at the end of it, right?
And we make it at the end, so it'll be at the end of March.
So it'll be the end of the quarter?
And then they start the next three, three quarters for April, May, and June, correct?
So, yeah, still three more months.
Is that, what's that?
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Counselor Grant has the floor.
All right, just for clarification, we, we have enough to pay this third quarter, April first?
We have enough to pay the third quarter, yes.
Under the contract?
Under, under the contract. We, we would, we would, we would recognize the, the current contract for this third quarter.
So even if we approved it tonight or next month, they're not getting another payment to the end of?
It would be the end of June.
Yeah.
April, May, June.
No matter what?
Correct.
We're not making, okay. So that was my clarification.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That, that would, that is correct.
My understanding is they currently don't have a contract, therefore we cannot make an additional payment.
For, for this third quarter.
Oh, for the third quarter, okay, that's different.
Is that correct, Counselor?
Is that, Monica, you think that's...
So, and, and that is, that is, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I, that clarify, because I know we've had this conversation. So I believe that we will not be able to make the third quarter. Okay. And that's what the, that's what the, that's what the chamber is aware of. That was our notification to the chamber, okay.
Okay.
All right.
I yield for now.
Okay, now where we're at is I've got Counselor Foster. We are on the motion to table. So Counselor Foster is the only one I've got on my list. No, no, he asked before you did. Now I'll come back to you. Okay. So Counselor Foster, you have the floor.
Well, we have a special city council meeting some, coming up sometime, right?
Correct.
Not the nineteenth, not the twenty-fifth, sometime, and this is a tabling motion, so it can be brought up at a special, at a city council meeting in the future, which the special city council meeting would be before, hopefully it's before April first, but, or maybe not.
No.
But it could be brought up another time. But, truthfully, we had lots of excuses why they couldn't meet with us, and then one of the time, it was very adversarial, they were meeting with us, and we were, we were just trying to work out an agreement. They're not here now, they weren't here at legal. I, I, I say, I mean, that's why I seconded the table, supposedly to get this out in the open, but also, I, I don't think it's a bad motion to table. If they don't get another payment, they should cooperate. I don't understand why it's so hard, I mean, it's not like, we're just trying to give them seventy-six thousand dollars. So, thanks. I yield.
All right, I got Counselor Best, that exhausts my list.
Okay, we've been, we've been racking with the chambers since two thousand and twelve, since I can remember, and I think it's been even longer than that. And, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing, even when I was in business and used the chamber, I didn't see the fruits of the chamber utilizing Roswell. Are they selling Roswell, are they just selling the chamber, are they just the redcoats that are cutting ribbons? I'm just, I'm, and, and the business after hours, you know, it's, it's, it's just talking to each other, and I'm not sure that they're actually helping Roswell, they're helping the businesses in, in there, but they used to bring people into town, they used to send packets out, send packets in, so forth and so on, and maybe I'm old-fashioned, you know, I don't, I don't know. I mean, Judy, what are you seeing? I'm not seeing it.
Let's don't do this back and forth. You got the floor, then I'll call.
I yield to Judy.
You want to say, I have, I have Counselors Sanchez and Robuck now. I did not have, oh, you didn't? Be careful what you do with your hands. All right, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Neb. Under the service agreement on page three seventy-eight, it says, the city manager or designee will evaluate the performance of, of chamber annually. What does this entail, and has this been done?
It has not been done in, in any great detail up to this point. This is, that is a new condition within the contract. If you'll notice, both of the, both of the chamber agreements have a listing of metrics, essentially, under the Exhibit B, so that we can track exactly what, because we're providing the funds in order to strengthen business, and so we want to see that back from the chambers as well, too. So, that is a clause that is in there. What we had between the two chambers up until this point was, one of them had to go to a Finance Committee meeting for a, a review, the other one had to go to the full city council. What we've, what, in the conversation we had at, at the last legal committee, was it was determined that it is better to have this work done by staff through the city manager, and then a presentation be presented to the city council, rather than have a committee of city council, a smaller group of the city council. So it would either be to take it all to the city council, or keep it at the staff level and bring it through that way. And so, to answer your question and to go through that, it has not been done on, on that basis, because we did not have the listing of metrics. They did provide, and I know the chamber was here last April, they did provide their annual report at that point in time. Kristi Mann was the executive director for the Hispano Chamber, and she did also do an annual report for the city council at our request, so.
What does an evaluation look like?
The evaluation is to take that information that's in the metrics, we will look at their annual report. If you look at the listing of the metrics on Exhibit B, and I would have to pull up exactly that page closer to it. But it will look at, essentially, the, do they have new business in there? Do they, what, what members have they lost, what members have they, have they gained? What type of outreaches have been within their membership? Essentially, we'll take the executive director report that is done on a monthly basis to the, to the chamber boards, and we'll use that information as well. I believe that is, that's all the main, primary point, so.
So when was the last time it was done?
The last time I would say it was done for, to any level, was when both chambers came to the city council last year and did their annual report. And that's why, and that's why we've built these, both of these agreements with quarterly payments and a monthly reporting within that. Both of these agreements now, because of the, the type of agreement that they are, they are actually being managed by the staff underneath Public Affairs. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Stubbs, did you want to jump in here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. To answer a couple of questions, that was one of the things I think that took the committee as much work as it did, was to really get a, a document that could be responded to, and that was understandable as to what we expected. Just, let's see, I don't know where it actually is, I probably do, but we said that we wanted our money specifically to go for the Roswell Chamber to business retention and development and relocation services. We took out anything that said leadership Roswell or economic development, and so it's specific to that. If you'll look on page three eighty-one of the total packet, which is the scope of work for the, which is the Exhibit A, that sort of spells out what we wanted to see done, and then, I got my pages mixed up, but then, as Mr. Neb said, there's Exhibit B that talks about the matrix that we want them to follow, those are the things we want them to present to us, and then the Exhibit C discusses, again, the in-kind assistance of thirty-three hundred dollars for the rise over Roswell. But I think if you, if you look through this, it, it also eliminated my concern, and I think, I know everybody agreed with me, and that was that we were, are we paying ahead, before their services, or are we paying after? So we're definitely now paying after, so it's on a reimbursable, and that's one of the, the reason, the three months is after the fact, after we get the reports of what they have done. Thank you.
Counselors, other, Counselors Henderson?
Joe, did I understand you to say that the chamber still had some questions or some items that they wanted to change?
Yes, they, they, when we met with them in the last, when, with our physical meeting, I guess, at that point in time, they expressed that they wanted to make some adjustments to that. We provided time for them to do that. We've, we, we reminded them of Legal Committee, we reminded them of the concern we had with the timing and everything, and we, we let them know when the Legal Committee was, we let them, we've invited them to the city council meeting. And, and so, we have received a couple of emails from, I believe, the executive director, as well as the individual that was helping to do whatever amendments that they were wanting to see, and then we just never received anything at that point in time. We were told it was, it would be forthcoming, and then it never, never arrived.
Well, thank you, Joe, I just, that, that concerns me that we're still, maybe don't have an agreement, and so I would support the table.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Robuck again.
First time on this one.
Oh, no, you had your hand up there, and then you said you...
Oh, right, right, yes. My second ass, but first time talking. So I, I just want to make, make sure I have these facts clear, as best as the staff can provide. Everybody's been working on our side, working on this agreement, trying to get it updated, get it more accurate, get it more focused, love it. The, ten days ago, we handed them a document that, and they said, we'd like to make changes from this document. They were invited to this meeting, they were invited to legal, they didn't show up to either. Did, did they say they weren't gonna show up? Did they communicate to that, to anybody directly, like, sorry, we can't make it?
No, no, sir. No, I, I believe we did not receive any response to the invitation.
Okay. Yeah, I, and, you know, I definitely, we need to table this, in any case, for me, I couldn't vote for this today, so, because I would want to, I would want to seek, get more information from what happened with that and why, you know, I'm sure there's two sides of the story, but still, that's, right now, it looks, it looks bad. I would have to agree with Counselor Best, it's, their, their non-show up is, is pretty, pretty sorry. I yield.
Whoa, okay. Both, or just Counselor Pace, or Counselor Moore?
Counselor Moore.
Okay, Counselor Moore.
I have a question. If we table this, will the, how will you reach out to make sure that there's, there's this contact, or when, at what point will you say, okay, it's over? Or will you reach out as, you know, as the city manager to say, look, we're trying to finalize this, if we don't hear from you, you got five days, or whatever? Are you just gonna let it roll over and table and wait to hear from them?
We would, we would reach out to them with, with the intention of the table, because there is a, there's a cause and effect with the tabling as well, and that's what I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of. So the cause and effect will be is, is that we will not be able to continue this month-to-month. And so we will inform them of that, and I would, I would anticipate that, I do know that they rely upon the funding that we provide them to, to complete the service that they do. I would expect that that would create a, a conversation very quickly.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselors, anyone else on this? All right, thank you, Counselors, anyone else on this? If not, oh, Counselor Oropesa, you did fool me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess my question is, i- if we're having such a, uh, an issue with the contract. Because it's not complete. Why is it even on the, uh, agenda?
Uh, the, the reason that it was put, placed on the agenda was because of the time constraints with not being able to provide the support. When we started the conversation at the end of the last contract and the last agreement, we went month to month because we were having a very good conversation to city council. We be, we truly believed that this contract negotiations to amend the agreement, to bring it up to date, we would have been done by the end of the year. End of the year came and then it, and then it went, so, um, whatever the council's pleasure is, we believe that at least is with staff, that we needed to present what we've prepared for the city council to consider. Um, I, I would say that if you were to approve this agreement without having the other side negotiated to the same terms. Uh, we would come into a quandary of take it or leave it in that scenario because the city council had actually approved.
See, but that, that's exactly my point. That if indeed this contract has a lot of issues with it. Because the, the chamber hasn't come forward to address whatever issue it is that, that we're having. Why are we even discussing the, the contract if, if indeed it, it hasn't? Because the way I see it, wh- once it's on the, the agenda, then I, I want to be able to, be able to take action, yes, no, whatever, or make, uh, uh, changes or, or what have you. But in this case, it seems like. Communication wasn't there between the chamber and the, and the, and the city and, and perhaps if the communication was there, there was no answer from one party. Which would tell me that there's a, a problem.
Correct.
And, and, and so if, if those problems haven't been resolved, then I would think that we don't have a, a contract that we can take action on.
Certainly, and, and I, and I can appreciate that. I, I believe the one thing that, that everybody should be aware of as well too is that we are trying to equalize agreements. And we've had those conversations as well too, as to why do we do the agreement with one this way, why do we do the agreement with the other this way? And so we tried to equalize them out there, so I, I guess to a certain point with, uh, Counselor Stubbs, Counselor Foster and staff as we've been working through this. We're not sure what recommendation would be coming back from the other chamber in order to reach a, an acceptable agreement. And we want to make sure that we're keeping these agreements fairly similar because of the type of business that they both are doing for supporting the business community. And I, I think, and I appreciate what you're saying, uh, but I think that's where we were kind of stuck in a, between a rock and a hard place to a certain point with this.
And, and I understand, uh, for all intended purposes, this, these contracts are new. You can't rely on the old contracts they were there. Because tho- those contracts. And because I was involved in them, and, and at least on the, the Hispanic Chamber side of it. They weren't clear as to what exactly was it that they were going to, to expect. Because it, when, when the, the funding started for both chambers and EDC, which was, uh, whatever they were called previously.
Way back then.
It used to be that the, the Chavez County, the city of Roswell, they would both give money to EDC. And they were, were the ones that were responsible for distributing the money and coming up with a contract. And, and basically at that point in time, the Roswell Hispanic Chamber was tasked with the, the task of doing tourism. That, that was what they were tasked with. And, and that's the reason that they ran the visitor center for six years or whatever number of years they, that they ran it to or through. And at that point, when John Mulcahy came on board with EDC, he changed the system. And he said, chambers, you go directly to each municipality and, and, and you ask for, for money directly. And they brought those contracts with them, but they really didn't have any meaning to, to speak of. So now, like I said, for all intended purposes, this, these contracts are new. And so you haven't had the opportunity to evaluate and, and see if indeed each entity is doing what they're supposed to be doing. You know, I have a problem with trying, with tabling this. Because I, I really don't want the, the chamber to suffer. Uh, ma- especially if they weren't told that they were expected to be here to do a, a presentation or, or, or something like that.
Sure, thank you.
You know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have Counselor Best and that will exhaust my list.
Exactly, let, let me see if I have this straight, they have been contacted more than twice, maybe three times to come and cooperate with this situation. They know that they're getting seventy-six thousand seven hundred dollars a year for their events to help the city grow. But they're too bothered to read our agenda when they know it's close. Or they're too bothered not to come to our meetings even though they're long and knowing that this meeting was going to be a really exciting one, come and pass their cards out. You know, I don't understand, I still think we need to table it, we need to, we need to pull their bluff, they need to understand that we mean business. I'm tired of tiptoeing through the tulips with them, it's been this way for years and years and years. They need to know that we mean, mean business and they need to get their crud together.
Thank you, Counselor, I have no one else on my list and I will now ask for a vote. I will. This is a motion to table this agreement. No, to a later.
Till they decide to cooperate and play. They, they're already getting.
Hang on, all right. All right, we're, this is a motion to table. All right, a motion to table to a later date. All right, this will be a roll call vote. A roll call, a yes tables this matter to a future date to be determined. A no does, uh, refuses the table and would keep us back in action on the matter. Once again, a yes tables it, a no rejects the table and when we would continue debating and discussing the agreement. Ms. Call, can you call the roll please?
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
No.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Grant.
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Best? Yes. Motion passes.
All right, passes eight to, like Counselor Foster, I don't have your vote appearing on the vote machine. Thank you. We got it, eight to one, thank you. Uh, next up is item number thirty-seven, and Counselor Stubbs.
Are you getting tired of hearing my voice? Um, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'm thinking this must all been the same legal committee because again, it was at a vote of three to zero.
Cool.
Um, so, what can I say? I move, uh, to approve the fire apparatus service agreement for a term of twenty-four months with an opportunity to. Re, I can't read my own handwriting. Uh, renew, expand and extend by mutual agreement, um, an annual increment up to eight renewals.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve a fire service, fire apparatus service agreement. You don't look like Chief Graham. Oh, it's not supposed to be Chief Graham. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, for your second to last item tonight. We're asking you to consider the agreement that the city and sta- or staff and the proposer, proposer have reached. Um, to refresh your memory on this item, uh, the city has twenty-five fire apparatus vehicles, it's our truck, fire trucks. And we split it at the expiration of our last fleet services agreement. Uh, this is RFP eighteen-one-four, this is the one specifically to the fire apparatus vehicles. We have come to a final agreement with them, uh, this, with Wild Horse Transportation LLC. It'll be a two-year initial term with options for renewal, the base rate is going to be eighty-five dollars an hour, uh, for working on those trucks. Uh, and then it also is going to have reporting requirements, and this was a big thing for our fleet manager that it include additional requirements that they have. Reporting and maintenance schedules that they can provide. It also has an annual review so that the fleet manager will sit down with them to kind of give them a heads up on how they're performing and according to what metrics. I will tell you in the meetings that we have had with them, uh, they have already been going out and creating additional, uh, standards, working with some of the drivers of those fire trucks. Uh, to make sure that everybody can kind of be on the same page and that they can communicate directly with the people who are operating the trucks or the people who are working on the trucks. Uh, so I think that that is going to be a good, just from my own commentary, a good relationship moving forward. This was heard by the legal committee and recommended three to zero at their February meeting. Thank you.
All right. Counselors, any questions or comments on this fire apparatus service agreement? Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a voice vote, a yes or aye approves the fire apparatus service agreement as presented. A no or nay rejects the agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none, passes unanimously nine to zero. Next up, item number thirty-eight, Counselor Oropesa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at this time my move, we go into closed session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H two. To discuss limited personnel, uh, matters relating to the city manager's evaluation. And also pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven to discuss attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation. In which the city of Roswell is or may become a participant regarding an alleged procurement violation.
All right, I have a motion by Counselor Oropesa and a second by Counselor Best to go into closed session. Any debate or discussion on this motion? This will be a roll call vote. A yes or aye takes us into closed session, a no or nay keeps us in open meeting. Any questions, Counselors, if not, Ms. Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs.
Yes.
Counselor Robach.
Yes.
Counselor Grant.
Yes.
Counselor Henderson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Best? Yes. Motion passes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have, uh, ten thirty-three, we will recess the open meeting. We will convene in closed session back behind me in that, uh, back room at ten forty. Ten four zero.
If she'll stick around. I've taken Mike and, and if it looks like it's going to go that way, then we'll, I'll have Cincinnati out to get her. So just stick around because when we're done with that, then Mike's going to be booted out of there for the next subject. And so, uh, when he comes out, if, if it's not to bring her in, he can say, get on out of here. Uh, no, it's a reset.
So yeah, we'll wait.
Yeah, 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 we're, we're, we flipped it around so that we could take care of these things.